Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the role, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Here.
Merringa.
Here.
Norca.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwall.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Todd Kennedy from Grace Bible Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to follow that with a pledge of allegiance. Pastor, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Father in heaven, we come, we thank you for the blessings, the bounties that you've given to us. We're grateful for the new equipment. We've even enjoyed seeing outside this evening. We thank you for your provision of that. And we ask you to use that equipment to save lives, preserve lives, those of fire rescue workers themselves, as well as our neighbors. We thank you for your bountiful provision. We pray for our leaders, and may their minds and hearts be filled with all that is noble and true and pure, and we pray they will protect them, give them wisdom, knowledge, and insight for the meeting tonight. May they be able to fulfill the agenda set before them. We ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Bless you.
So you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes. Yes. Any opposition, please say no. We have the minutes from the July 11 meeting, which I was not present at. So JR, thank you for running that meeting. So is there a motion to approve those minutes from July 11?
So, support.
Motion, support. Any discussion, additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out or emphasize? If not, all those in favor of approving, please say yes. Yes. Any opposition, please say no. All right. It's that time of the year, and we have three sets of bills. So the first one, the old fiscal year, we have bills in the amount of about $446,000. So let's do those first. Ken, anything you'd like to point out before we open up the watchroom?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, by far, the largest invoice on that $446,000 list is $236,000 to the state of Michigan, and that is related to progress billing for the repaving on Wilson Avenue, the South City Limits. That's not a complete project. That's a progress billing, so you'll see more on that. And because it's a state project, you'll probably be seeing it for some time. It takes a while to get through that process. But the bulk of it was there. I did just note a couple of invoices, just to note some progress. On page three, the Hoon Horse Concrete Bill, that was related to the patio at the community building and sidewalk there, so that project is done. And also on that same page, three, Great Lakes Paving, the Buck Creek Trail Path by the Wedgewood Park area, where we've kind of gone around a former boardwalk area, $4,700. That project is done as well.
Okay. Any questions for Ken on any of the bills in the old fiscal year? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills for the old fiscal year in the amount of $446,839.18?
Support.
Support. Any other comments, questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Ken, new fiscal year, about $282,000 with the bills. Anything you'd like to point out on those?
Very similar to the old fiscal year bills. There's one large bill there, and that's related to the monthly health insurance premiums for city employees. And then after that, just a couple smaller ones to note. I didn't get a chance to ask the chief about it tonight, but I saw the bill for Exxon on there. That's related to our cameras.
Cameras. That's scheduled for installation three weeks behind.
Okay. That was a $13,000-plus bill. And then on page five, De Vries Landscaping, that was a DDA bill. Now that the Farmers Market Pavilion is done, the DDA is investing in some new decorations for next winter, so getting ahead on Christmas. That bill also included some other materials for replacing older decorations in the streetscape. So that was about $13,600. There may be other questions, but those are the ones I flagged for tonight.
Okay, great. Questions for Ken on any of those bills? Okay, is there a motion to approve the bills for the new fiscal year in the amount of
Support.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other comments, questions? All right, if not, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. All right, time for public comment. I see we have a few guests with us tonight. Anybody like to address the council during public comment? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what's on your Bill, it's good to see you.
Yeah. Great to be here. Mayor and the council of greater Granville. I'd like to make a couple of comments about the Christmas parade and the Christmas event. Greater Granville with over 16,000 residents in Greater Granville. I was make a comment, maybe the committee can consider this for the next go-around. I know it's been two years because of the virus, and we've been split up into new committees and new people. So one comment would have to do with the craft show. The craft show is located out in the grass area, and with the 16,000-plus citizens in Greater Granville, part of them have disability or are walker or hard to get around. If they would have changed the craft show to Wedgewood Park where the blacktop would be easy for wheelchairs and so on to get around, and be very handy, and in the past, it's been there for a number of years. The other part of the program was the flag raising. It's down by the entrance to the pancake breakfast. I give, it was A for effort, but the execution part of it, you know, back in the days when Bill Dootes was around, he'd have a, play the Star Spangled Banner, and the flag would be raised and so on. And we didn't have none of that this year. So hopefully, that would be some remarks for the new committee or whoever's on the committee to help on that. And the other comment would be about the parade. When we was active with the Legion in the parade, we'd go to the meetings, and they said, if you keep over 25 feet apart from the parade, then we're going to be pulling off the side street. And this parade, it sometimes it felt it was over because we'd have about a football link between events. So whoever's on the committee next year, if they would make that for the event, the parade is good, is looked forward to. It's what, tens of thousands of people come to Granville to watch that parade, and I think it'd help out. I think some of the highlights of the parade and the event was, I think, the Boy Scouts, and they did a marvelous job on the pancake breakfast, and they were eager to give you more if you wanted it. So they were, they did a magnificent job on that. I think the flyover was a big plus for the parade. It was enjoyed by everybody that was there. It was pretty neat, and they went over a number of times. It was really neat. And, of course, and then the fireworks, that was great, and I watched it from my backyard, and I could hear after the last blast, I could hear the applause. So it was really well-received. So those comments could be taken in consideration and be neat. The craft show is looked forward to by a lot of people, and at the time, they, you know, we had it over in the soccer field, the old football field, or under Wedgewood Park in the shaded areas. So they keep that in mind. And that's my general comments, Mayor and councilman Bill, and thank you for allowing me to be here.
No, thank you, Bill. And I know Ken was taking notes, so thank you for your good comments.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Come on up. Give us your name, address, tell us what you're thinking about. Welcome.
Social Security, no?
Don't even, no.
Hi, folks. I'm John Witsel. I'm running for state rep in the district here in 84, Republican side. Just wanted to announce that I was here, and appreciate you guys letting me speak briefly. Justin actually told me it might be a nice idea to come here and get more involved and see what's going on here locally. I'm right down the road, my office, so. Done business here for, well, I've been in business 20-some years, but I've been there about seven years, probably, over in the old Redmond Heating and Cooling Building, kind of at 5th Third. But just wanted to introduce myself and appreciate you guys' service.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's see, primaries to one week?
Yeah, about a week, week and a day.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council? Come on up and tell us what you're thinking about. Anybody? Okay. Next item, under ordinances and resolutions, says Department of MDOT, noise variance request for some construction on 28th Street from church to the East City Limits. Ken, tell us about that.
Well, we get requests on a fairly regular basis from MDOT, especially when it comes to M11 because of the volume of traffic, when they have projects that might better be accommodated with night work in order to avoid traffic disruption and increase safety. So there is an MDOT project coming up on M11, starting on August 1st. Reece Riley is the contractor for that project. It involves repaving M11 from Wilson Avenue in Granville to 131 in Wyoming. They have requested a variance to the Granville Code of Ordinance section that limits construction work between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. within 600 feet of a residence, and we do have some residents that qualify out there as being within that distance. So the city council has seen this a few times before, and has generally granted them. In fact, I think has always granted them. We have provided some public notice on that as well. We've got representatives here tonight from the contractor and engineer?
Yeah.
Okay. From Fishback. So we'll let them explain any specific details and answer any specific questions, but we have prepared for council a resolution that would grant the variance, as well as the background investigation to that, that presents some of the reasons for recommending approval. So I'll invite whichever or both to step up and...
All right. And as they're coming up, it seems like not that long ago, we did this also for 28th Street for, I think, the interchange area?
The bridge work, I think, last, over Chicago Drive.
Okay, bridge work.
Yeah.
And I know we granted it because get that project done.
That's right.
Welcome.
Hi, Al Rhodes, Reece Riley Construction. I'm our project manager for this upcoming project, so just like to thank you for considering this request. And I guess really, the project will be starting August, and we'll go through, scheduled to go through the end of October, hoping to improve on that. Majority of the night work will be mid-August through mid-September. We will be doing some joint repair work on the asphalt, and then doing two layers of asphalt paving for that process. So I guess really, I think probably best if you guys did have any questions, I'm here to answer them, so.
I got a quick question, just out of curiosity. So are you incentivized to speed the project up? And I know sometimes you get...
Sometimes, not on this particular contract.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah. We did put in a request, MDOT, to modify the maintenance of traffic and our staging to speed up the process a little bit, which has been approved. And our biggest thing was to reduce the amount of night work for our workers, because night work, asphalt paving, is a very dangerous aspect, especially on a main thoroughfare like 28th Street and 11th. So we did reduce the amount of night work proposed currently.
Any other questions?
Which end are you starting with?
I guess I'll start with you.
Sweet, which end of the street are you?
Oh, sorry. The Granville line, so Church Avenue heading...
Heading east towards 131.
Yeah, heading east, yep. So we will work in from church to Byron Center in that two-mile corridor, up to our leveling course of asphalt, so the second to top layer. And then we will progress from Byron Center to 131, and then come back and do our top layer of asphalt through that stretch.
So this is obviously coordination with the city of Wyoming, then, too?
Yeah, MDOT mainly. It's coordinating to MDOT, but yes, as well as city of Wyoming.
I think there was also a variance necessary in Wyoming, if I recall.
We did put in the request. We were told by the city of Wyoming that they were, it was not a formal request necessary. They were granting that.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Marcy, what would this resolution number be?
3284.
3284. Okay. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 3284, a resolution approving the Michigan Department of Transportation's request for variance from the city of Granville noise ordinance?
Support.
Motion, support. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Okay, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Okay, now we're down to the consent agenda, and this would be in the best interest of the city approval, because there are some purchases on there. So first, we have some reports from June. The investment, fire, and clean water plant reports are all in there, as well as the minutes from our downtown development authority meeting on the 14th. Also, we have a proclamation. This is one we do every year. It's for National Night Out, and that will be on August 2. We also have appointments, delegates to the MML Conference, Muskegon this year, in the fall. Ken, who do we normally have do that, our council?
Normally, it's the mayor and mayor pro town, if they're both attending. And if not, we designate whoever is going to be at the conference and willing to go to the meeting.
Okay. I'm going to be around. JR, are you around?
Okay.
So I guess the proposal is for us to be the delegates to that annual meeting. We also have purchase orders and requests from the fire department for SCVA replacement. Chief, anything we need to know? I know there's a memo in here on that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take any questions without a memo, Mark.
Yeah, expensive equipment, but absolutely necessary. Also, we have a request for a wide-format copy machine, about $10,536, just slightly over what we had budgeted. Also, in the motor pool, an air compressor, and then the police department HVAC upgrade, control system upgrade. So a lot of purchases on there, as well as the clean water plant blanket purchase order addition. So Todd, anything other than what's in the memo?
I can answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments on any of these items before we entertain a motion to approve? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city? Mr. Vee?
Support.
And support. Any other questions, comments? Okay, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item, city managers' report. First thing is a beer wine license request, and I see we have a couple of people from the chamber here, so.
And handbooks.
And handbooks. So it's always fun when you're involved. So Ken, anything?
This is another one of these things that is not new to city council. In fact, just last year, you approved a permit for the same activity during the 2021 Fall Fest. I think that might have been only for one night, as opposed to two. So this request this year is different in that it is for two days, both Friday and Saturday, and I'm sure Heather Beck can give us details on it. But essentially, during the period of time that the Fall Fest is occurring, operating a beer garden, it is existing within what now is a Granville, city of Granville social district, so that creates some specific requirements for us. But in general, it's going to make beer and wine available through single-day licenses, if approved by the State Liquor Control Commission during that event. And the chamber, Heather, is the primary sponsor.
Yep. So if you guys remember correctly, last year, we did it Friday night, and it rained cats and dogs. And we woke up Saturday morning, and it was a gorgeous day, and we had everything down there still set up, the beer trailer, but we didn't have a license to sell. So we could have opened it up the next day and hopefully resurrected the night before. So that's why we did the two days, so that this year, we can be the entire event, and if one day happens to be really bad weather, we can just say, close down, we're going to try again tomorrow, or we're going to do it tonight, and we're going to cancel tomorrow. So that's why we decided to do the two days this year. And...
And we'll provide volunteers.
Yep.
Do you need volunteer?
Yeah, you need Valentine's, Valentine volunteers, yes, you do.
Yes. Randy and I volunteered, and it was actually a lot of fun, and you kept us very busy this night.
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
And as far as the social district goes, Teresa and I left the Fall Fest out of the social district hours purposely because of the beer garden. So technically, the social district won't be open that, those two days.
So Thursday, yeah.
Yep, yep. We specifically left it out because we didn't want any confusion with it, and, yep. Anybody have some questions?
Any questions? Okay, let's see. We have, do we have a resolution or just approval on this one?
It's actually an approval that's signed by the police chief.
Okay.
And so within the past, as the council has passed a motion that would authorize the chief to indicate the city's approval on the state form.
Chief, any concerns?
Good question, if I could.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So since this is part of the social district, does that mean you're working with Michigan Moonshine and Osgood as part of the event?
Yes, yep. In the past, we've had Michigan Moonshine. They like to bring their own table and set up a tent at the event. Osgood usually supplies us with beer that we sell out, or sell out of our trailer. Yep. We purchase beer from them, and then we sell it at the trailer. So they will both be represented in the beer tent.
And Adesanya?
Adesanya Mead, they're over on 28th Street.
They're going to be there as well this year. I know he's at the Farmers Market.
Yes.
Nice, great guy.
Yep, I talked to him there a couple of weeks ago. He's super excited about it again.
And it's all really, really good. Not that we would know.
You've heard.
I've heard.
Is there a motion to authorize the police chief to sign this application for special event permit?
Support.
Support. Any discussion? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Okay, clean water plant server.
Yeah, we, council will recall, because it wasn't that long ago when you approved the budget, that you included a replacement of a SCADA server at that location. And that was therefore budgeted, but we now have a new arrangement with our IT, and I want to introduce Jason Rotman, who is here tonight, city of Walker IT director, that tonight is serving as city of Granville IT director.
Right.
Because of our new collaboration with the city of Walker on maintaining our systems. So we didn't think there'd be a lot of technical questions that we had about how servers work or anything, but we did want to give Jason a chance to introduce himself and put a face with the name. He's well-known already to our departments, because since July 1, we've made the transition, and Walker is now doing all of our work. As an outgrowth of that, there was a recommendation from IT to actually combine a couple of pieces into one particular platform. Yeah, come on up and explain that, and that's the purpose for us being on the, not on the consent agenda, is there is apportionment unbudgeted.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'll try to keep it brief, like, trying to get too technical. So when I, you know, we just came on board this month. We've been going through systems, onboarding, getting used stuff. Both Tim and Todd had called out the servers over at the SCADA. Upon further review, I recommended to combine both what I'm calling the production network and the SCADA network into one highly-available system that'll make things, that's an environment you need a hell of a lot of availability. So you'll get a kind of economies of scale, because we can combine everything together, get everything redundant, get everything onto a five-year cycle. So I'll try to keep, I'll just leave it there. If you've got any questions, let me know. So I haven't talked technical details all night, but I'm sure, I'm sure you'll want that, so.
Todd, maybe, Tim?
No, maybe we're a little bit different than the rest of the city, and then we have the SCADA server that controls all the pumps and valves and everything that's going on to plan itself. And then the network server is, the production server, they just calling it, is similar to what we would have here at City Hall. Like, aligning the two, like Jason mentioned, it just provides for efficiencies and puts us on a reliable cycle.
And we're able to use state bid pricing for this as well, so it works out economically also.
Right. So I assume you give your personal cell phone number out to all the departments?
Got my work cellphone.
That's how you work.
Yeah, that's good. So I did want to say, on behalf of my, the team at Walker, we do what, we're enjoying working with everyone in Granville, and we continue, or look forward to continuing the partnership, so.
Thanks, Jason.
No problem.
Any questions for Jason?
Just a quick question. So one of the, if I understand it right, one of the servers needs to be replaced. Does the other one also need to be replaced, or is there some way to repurpose that for something else?
No, the production servers, as I'm calling, are about five years old. That's typically when you replace servers, because that's when hard drives and stuff start failing. So it's kind of the industry standard about the five-year mark. That's about as far as you push it. So then the SCADA servers are about 10 years old, so those definitely need to be replaced. That's why I think right now is a good time to combine everything, get it on all the same refresh cycles, and we can put that into the CIP plan and just plan for every five years, replacing.
So they're both out of life, basically?
Basically, yeah.
And replacing them, combining two into one, actually probably saves us in the long term?
It does, yes, yep.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
No problem. Good to meet you.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase order request in the amount of $43,163.86 from Dell Technologies for this software equipment and hardware?
Support.
Support. Any other questions, comments? I see, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Trust?
Yes.
Vanderwalt?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes. Okay, next item.
This is the big homework part of the assignment, I guess, although you're not gonna get to take it home, you gotta do it while you're here, so I guess it's in school, in-class assignment. But Jerry Richards is here. Jerry is the MML Executive Search Consultant. We've engaged the MML in trying to put together the process for recruiting a new city manager. And Jerry's background is in local government, most prominently as Meridian Township Supervisor for over, well, 20, 22 years? What was it? Manager, correct, yes. 21 years. So he's seen not only our side of the table, but he also has performed like 27 searches for executives as well. So for the next probably 90 minutes or so, he's gonna run the council through an exercise to start developing the profiles necessary for the recruitment. And so I'll just turn it over to Jerry.
Great, welcome. Good to see you in person. We've talked on the phone, so nice to meet you.
On behalf of the Michigan Municipal League, it's my pleasure to be here to assist the city in finding a replacement. I've been told it's gonna be difficult to match Ken's experience and the work that he's done here. But our, our goal, like it was when I was a manager, and that is when you've replaced a key person, you always try to find somebody better. So that will be the goal. And I do have a flip chart that I'll move up here and hopefully everybody can see it. As Ken mentioned, I'll basically be facilitating, asking you to provide me information and I'll be writing it down and then putting that information together with the information I did receive and collect from your staff earlier today. Had a nice conversation with most of your department heads and those I didn't talk to, I will be talking to individually. And so that information will be put together, so you won't have to take notes. I will provide that information hopefully shortly after, within a week or so. And so this is the start of the process. As this, prior to this meeting, you did receive a memorandum from myself on behalf of the league, kind of explaining what we're gonna do. And then the next meeting we'll have will be where we actually go over the resumes that have been submitted. And just to clarify, the resumes and the application information come into the Michigan Municipal League and then I'll be reviewing those and doing background checks, preliminary background checks, and interviewing the candidates before those are qualified, before you actually see the information about those. And that's typically done in a closed session and it is the right of the candidates to have their information reviewed in closed session until the point at which they become a finalist to be interviewed. And then the names of those candidates will be made known to the public and also the actual interviews will be done in public. So that'll be a public meeting, that'll be the third, the third meeting. So tonight's meeting is, is to gather information on my part for you, for me to understand as much as I can about the position, what you're looking for, and to try to get some consensus among you folks as to what skills, attributes, qualifications you're looking for. And then we'll put that together in a, in an ad supplemented with pictures. So everything is digital these days, so it'll be a digital format. You'll see the text, a draft of the text before it actually goes out. So I'll be sending, the next communication you'll get from me will be the draft text. And then you'll have a few days to review it, make any suggestions, and then we start advertising from there. So if you have any questions either now or at the end of our work here, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Do you just receive applications and review those, or do you actually do some recruiting too?
No, I actually, no, I, in fact, yeah, it's more and more become a recruiting as opposed to just advertise. Back in the day, when I first got into city management, you just put an ad out there and, you know, 30 or 40 or 50 people applied. These days, it's, it's more competitive, people are less likely to want to move, in some cases, less likely to want more responsibility. So yes, we do solicit information. In fact, I would even, I always say to the elected officials, if you have names of folks that you think might fit the bill here, to provide me the information, I will give you my business card and I'd be more than happy to be proactively contacting those folks. So I intend to be, particularly in the metro Grand Rapids area, be talking to managers, of which I know most of the managers in the area, and also statewide. The league sends out information, more than just posting it on our website. We send out email to basically all of the administrators, department heads, alerting them as searches are, are come up. And from what I've gathered in my first meeting and information that candidate staff, the clerk has sent me, this, you have a very nice community, financially stable, good department heads. From what I gather from the staff, good city council to work with, so I think you have a lot of things in your favor. It is a... These days, so I can't guarantee you how many applicants you're gonna have, but I think in terms of having all of the right elements that managers, good qualified managers would consider, you have, I think, all of those pretty much checkmarked, so. Any other questions before I start?
Yeah, so just kind of piggyback on that. So as far as advertising and recruitment, is it pretty much within the state of Michigan, or does it go?
No, it's, it's US-wide. We, we... The International City Management Association, we do post ads there.
Okay.
And Midwest, we typically will hit the, for instance, here because of your proximity to Illinois, we would advertise in the Illinois, Michigan, you know, the Illinois Municipal League and probably Ohio too, to, and potentially Wisconsin, to not only put it in the International City Management Association, which is a nationwide, but also regional, in addition to the state.
Does that encompass townships and counties then too?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's not just municipalities?
Yep. Yeah, in terms of the, the, yeah, I guess the answer to that is yes. Generally speaking, in Michigan, if somebody's looking for a management job in local government, they're gonna look at the league. The, the league is more proactive in those kind of services than the township, the MTA, because only a small fraction of the townships actually have administrators. But many of those are part of what's, we have the Michigan Municipal Executives and pretty much all of the administrators in, that are township administrators, of which I was one at one time, were members of the Michigan Municipal Executives. And we were league members also, municipal league members, so you get a pretty good cross-section of everybody that's looking, so. I'm going to move the flip chart half setup. I can move this angle at, I'm good, my handwriting isn't the best, so you can question if I, what I've written down here. But we start off essentially, you know, looking at the community, so we're gonna start at something relatively easy for you all. And that is, let identifies your community traditions on one side, here on the left side, and then any arts-type thing, festivals that draw people to your community. I guess one way of looking at it is, why do you, why did you move here? And, you know, why do your neighbors tend to say they move here as you're out campaigning or whatever? So this helps. What I'm gonna do with this information again is put it in the highlights in a brochure. And so I wanted to hear your perspective on this. And what I'll be doing here is similar to what I did with the staff, got a little more detail. You'll see the next flip chart has to do with the government, how it's organized and run. They had a little more detail on that, but I'm still interested in your perspective on each one of these things. And then when I put it together, what you'll see is I color-coded what came from this meeting, one color, and then of ink, and then you'll see what came from the staff in terms of their comments. I don't tend to put it down twice. If it's came from both, it's gonna be probably the council, it'll be listed first, and then I add everything else there. So we use this information not only for the brochure, but you'll see as we go through in terms of evaluating the candidates and how they stack up with what you're looking for in your next city manager. So, so this is kind of a, you know, looking for comments, I'll write as fast as you can tell me and then we'll move on. I expect we'll spend a little bit of time on this, not a lot, we'll get more into more media things that you'd be interested in, but. So from identity, community, traditions, anybody want to start me off with something?
As far as why my family chose to live here, very strong schools and it's a very safe community.
Okay, so strong schools. Safe community. And I will, before moving on to the next sheet, I will read what we have down here, we can always come back to, an ad.
I was gonna piggyback on that and say affordable cost of living?
Okay. Cost of living?
Under arts and festivals, we have a DDA that's very active and we have like, ah, at least a half a dozen events that draw thousands of people downtown. I mean, we have a Christmas parade, we have an adult Easter egg hunt, we have a spring art and chocolate walk with kids' artwork and chocolate available. We have a vintage festival in the summer, Fall Festival, yeah, six big events and all run by the DDA, but...
And that's not counting 4th of July?
Not counting 4th of July, which is...
You already heard tonight, public comment?
Tens of thousands of people at that.
Yeah, he said Christmas parade, he was talking about the 4th of July, I ran from a couple of weeks ago. The gentleman, yeah, those were all 4th of July, the craft show, the flyover.
There is Christmas in July, right? Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah. I, I put down the Granville Commons, it's something new, but it's, it's a meeting space for the community.
And our Farmer's Market Pavilion too. That was a, both, the Commons Project was a $5 million project and Farmer's Market was a $3 million project.
Oh wow.
Big projects.
Backing up to 4th of July just for a second, Granville really punches above its weight for 4th of July. We spend more probably than any other city our size in Michigan, assume more risk probably than any other city our size in Michigan. You've probably already heard that from some of our department heads, but it's a real, real big deal.
I'm familiar with, you know, the risk of fireworks.
Right, when the resident here said it brings tens of thousands, well, it's true. It used to bring that many and it's not, you know, it wasn't quite as big last couple of weeks ago, but we're gonna build it back, so it's huge, huge.
I did get a nice tour by your city manager, between meetings here took me around and showed me all your wonderful parks and different developments that are going on, very nice.
Yeah, I think you can add the parks in there too. You know, we're working hard, we've got a long-range plan to improve the parks, but we've got a great start.
Jerry, I think one thing that identifies us too is that our proximity to downtown Grand Rapids is, we're 10, 15 minutes max. We're 20 minutes to the beach, we're two hours to northern Michigan, we're three hours to Chicago or Detroit if you want to get there. But we don't have to pay for the expense of big city living or the hassle, the hustle, the bustle.
Okay, so you're centrally located from the other things that you mentioned. So that's up north, as some people would say.
Pretty standard.
I, I don't know if this is under IDs and traditions, but I think our community, I, I'm hoping and I believe it's true, has a reputation as trying to say yes. If somebody comes here and has a project and they want to do something, we try to say yes if it's reasonable. And I see our Chair of the Planning Commission nodding in agreement in the back of this room right now, so.
So this is from a planning, project perspective?
Yeah, I think people know they're, they're gonna, they're gonna get a fair shake.
Not a bunch of red tape and we don't, you know...
We don't want anything happening.
Right.
Well, they will also come here when they talk about their projects and say, "We've already met with city staff and we're very well-received and treated very respectfully and, you know, they were very helpful with permitting and, you know, information and things like that."
I mean, there are cities have the absolute opposite reputation.
But they make a point of mentioning it.
Impossible to work with, you know?
They mention it when they come up here, they say, "We've talked to your staff and they've just been wonderful to work with, extremely helpful, they've given us all kinds of information," which I don't think they'd mention if that was the case.
I'll put this over here, you know, with the helpful staff, this is... Staff to developers?
I mean, just in the general community too, really, I mean, we get lots of kudos from the clerk's office and the treasurer's office too about customer service.
Yeah.
When people come in to pay bills or need a passport or other services that are provided.
I'm just gonna mention shorthand, there are city kudos.
Yep.
I think I can take it even one step further, Steve. I think our community in general is a very welcoming community. You know, as, as, if you could profile the residents here, we're welcoming, whether that's for schools or faith-based opportunities or whatever it is, I feel like it's, we're a very welcoming community.
Yeah, that's good.
Jerry, there's probably some professional term for this, but I would call it a full-service community. We have our own police, we have our own fire, we have our own clean water plant, we've got a Department of Public Works, and for still being a small city, we're, I call it full-service.
EMS.
And we have one of the lowest mileage rates in the area, we can offer all the services to, even for a size. It's a very well-run, efficient community and it's, you know, it starts with Ken obviously as the executive, but then, you know, all of our department heads really cooperate and work very well together to provide a lot of value to our residents.
You know, to piggyback on what you guys have said, City Council has made a commitment to be intentionally inclusive. We passed a non-discrimination ordinance a couple of years ago without the drama of a lot of communities have had.
Welcoming, so welcoming community in...
Non-discrimination ordinance, I mean intentionally.
You were forced to do it?
We had, had a couple of residents, one in particular encouraging us.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so let's slide over here to, we've started on city government. So the feedback you're getting and, and I'd say kudos to you as the council, because that's part of your job, is to find out, well, how is, how are the services listening to the community members? And that's good. So we got helpful staff, both the city clerk level, planning, full-service community for a small city, you offer a lot of services, you have low mileage rate, well-run and efficient and provide high value to residents. How about yourselves working together?
We, I think we get along really well. I'm very fortunate to work with all of these people.
So, so City Council works well together?
High level of civility.
I was just gonna say, high level of civility, and we had another resident who's also here who kind of encouraged us a while back to, you know, initiate an ethics policy, so to speak, to, you know, kind of put it in writing as far as how we do business and how we work with each other and kind of what we hold ourselves responsible for.
So you're working on that or did you do?
It's done, yeah, it's done, it's just done recently.
So you have that statement?
I don't know what might be appealing to a candidate for city managers, I would consider this a low drama council.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not on the news very often, right?
Yeah, right. We've gotten compliments, actually, this council has, from consultants that we deal with for efficiency and stability. It's true.
That's good.
And they, consultants that work with other local governments in this area.
It is a drama for sure. Having experienced some of them, so it's a pleasure to work with people that are working together.
There's longevity too. Ken's been here 26 years as manager and 10 years before that?
Yeah. Yeah. Longevity.
As if I was a candidate and they had a new city manager every 18 months, I'd wonder what's going on.
It's like unprecedented tenure as a city manager.
Yeah, I think I mentioned to Jerry, we've had three managers since 1971.
I don't know if this hits on our staff umbrella here, but our department heads are fantastic and I guess that kind of leads me to our next challenge, is we're looking to replace another department head. So hopefully this puzzle all fits together, but I know that is a challenge we're working with and I'm sure we'll hear updates from that, that search as well, but that's...
Yeah, you're looking for a key department head?
Speaking of finance, oh, I'm sorry, Randy.
I just want to point out that we've got along in good relationship with our school system, both public and private in this community.
Okay, good. Schools?
Kind of to go back to arts and culture, I guess, just for a second here. You know, so in addition to city-sponsored types of events, we do have a DDA planning or an event planning person who works with the events that were mentioned, but we also have a lot of other organizations in the community that are, you know, the schools, obviously, but other organizations that cooperate that, you know, kind of there's a lot of synergy between different organizations that are doing events. We have a very active library that does a lot of programming and events.
Tonight we have the chamber and the ambar.
Chamber and the ambar.
They're putting on that beer tent.
You know, a lot of the churches and other, you know, nonprofit organizations in the area too, that there's just a lot of community cooperation and synergy around public events and...
Yeah, it's been mentioned briefly with the library too, especially with the expansion. Their big touch-a-truck event going on tomorrow. Yeah, it's been mentioned briefly with the library, too, especially with the expansion, their big touch-a-truck event going, going on tomorrow.
Okay.
So, it's not really a lot of like turf wars, I mean, there's just a lot of like cooperation and synergy and people collaborating.
And like Randy said, the schools, it's the public and the private schools. I mean, we share athletic facilities and.
Pretty much all of our parks are partnered up with a school, either a public or private school.
Right. And I'm not putting your partner with. Public and private.
Parking and recreation department is really a joint effort and the committee is the private school, or the, the schools on the city.
Yeah, it's made of school people.
And city people.
City people.
Yeah.
We also, Randy just mentioned, Randy Cracker, our city attorney, the city council, in one of the strategic planning sessions, we intentionally have developed a mini-grant program for residents, things that build community, foster neighbors getting together, so.
Okay, so mini-grant program? Is that earmarked towards neighborhoods?
Yeah.
Neighborhood, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe for talking about good things we've done, and let's talk about our special funds. Budget allocation for.
Special projects.
Projects or, and that's, there's a very healthy balance in that, that fund, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, so let's, we're moving along a little nicely. The next thing I wanna talk about is the ideal candidate or candidates, qualifications and what have you. So, we've got education experience, we have skills, knowledge on one hand, personality traits on another. And then, of course, part of the attraction is a starting salary range, and which may or may not be, and again, I'm looking for your direction, the range for the position, uh, there is a, you probably know better than I, a salary range already set for the position. But, are you interested in, you know, what part of that range are you interested in actually starting somebody off at, so?
I frankly don't know what that range is, I mean, I, I can guess, but.
Which, let's, let's do this, the last thing we'll talk about in here is a salary range. So, you get a, you get a chance for it to kind of bounce around a little bit, and then I've got some salary information. That's a survey of local governments, including yours, that are somewhat similar. So, let's talk about education experience first. And you may or may not know that you do have a job description for the position.
I was just gonna ask, is there a job description for this position? I don't know if I've ever seen it, because it's probably.
I asked for it, let's see if I can.
You're not old enough to. It was probably written before.
Well, it actually was updated at some point here, because they talk about credentialing as, prefer, the ICMA has a credentialing program, which probably is fifteen, maybe, years old since they've started doing that. So, it's been updated sometime in the last fifteen or twenty years. But, I guess, from my vantage point, I may just talk about education experience from the pool size. I think all of you can, can appreciate that, the narrower the scope that you want, you know, the, the higher, let's just say, the qualifications, the smaller the actual pool that you're drawing programs. Again, that has to, of course, be offset by, you know, what are your expectations and to a certain extent, you know, what's, this is the job description, which I guess from my vantage point could probably be altered, but it, it says here that, from an educational standpoint, a master's degree in public administration, business administration or related field. So, the, the, and five to seven years of municipal management experience. That's in the job description. So, I know Ken has a master's degree in public administration, I have a master's degree in public administration. They're not giving out as many master's degrees these days, because less people are going into government as a whole and then public administration as, too. But it's really your call in terms of, you know, how, what level of required education experience you would like. And, and people have you as preferred, uh, you know, so you, you, you can require it, prefer it. All I'm saying is, from the, from what's in your job description, it says, and then the other thing, it says here, the requirements listed below are representative of the knowledge, skills and abilities and minimum qualifications necessary for the essential function of the position, but it does say master's degree, but it's really your call.
What's a comparable, you said, you know, the description says.
Oh, comparable, it could be somebody with an engineering degree that say they were, you know, ran big public works operation, because a lot of, I mean, there you're talking about projects and, it could be finance, it could be planning. It could be, what else would maybe fit that role?
That's fair.
No, that's fair.
If you're trying to compare the administration, there's, you know, when you compare.
Generally, what I do on that sense of trying to evaluate, I would evaluate with giving somebody, at least from the standpoint of deciding whether to phone interview them or not, I'd give them the benefit of the doubt and talk to the person to see how broad is their knowledge base, how well do they fit, you know, what you're looking for otherwise, and then, you know, then bring that information to you folks and then you can decide, does this person have enough background and experience to fill this position? So, I'll, I'll do, you know, I'll get as much information as I can about the candidates, including talking to references ahead of time, so that you'll have a pretty good idea when we sit down generally in close session and kind of start going over the applicants as to, you know, what are their strengths, maybe what, what don't they have in their background that you'd like to see them have, and then decide whether or not that, that person is, if you really like to talk to the person as part of an interview. So, education and experience, again, master's degree, five to seven years, municipal management experience, is, is that what you want here? Or would you like to modify that?
I, yeah, I think that seems very reasonable. I mean, I was gonna say, I don't think we want somebody who's, doesn't have any experience. It's not a starter community type of position, I think, I mean, 'cause I think we have enough complexity and enough going on here that we want somebody that has some level of experience. I was actually thinking like five to ten years in my head, so five to seven sounds perfect, and I think it, I think it is helpful to have a graduate degree. 'Cause the areas that you mentioned are all things that are encompassed in a public administration program. You get planning, you get human resources, you get finance, you get a little of all of that, so I think that's a good, good qualification as a starting point.
I agree with the experience side of it. The education, I think I would be open to the usage of preferred. I know I'm in education and I've worked for superintendents who've had their doctorate degrees and I've worked for superintendents who got their masters just in time to become, and I don't think the education was any guarantee of the quality of their leadership. So, to me, the preferred, I think, yes, I would like that, but if we have someone who's, has thirty years of municipal experience running a public works or something in a major city and they, they could handle the job, I wouldn't wanna bypass them just because they don't have that particular degree.
I'd be fine with preferred, strongly preferred, whoever.
Okay, we, we are looking for consensus.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, my two cents was gonna say, you know, you started off this presentation talking about we want, when somebody retires, you wanna fill that position with somebody who's better than that. And so I think if we set the bar high, we can take that pool and funnel it down as quickly as possible. However, I agree with Justin that I think a preferred degree, you may meet a diamond in the rough that doesn't have that, but has, like you said, thirty years.
So, let me clarify, so a bachelor's degree required in a public administration or related field, master's degree, strongly preferred or preferred.
Sure. Yeah, I like that. Preferred, preferred.
Preferred. Is that consensus?
Because I hate to miss somebody who doesn't apply, 'cause you're like, well, that's required, so I'm not gonna apply.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's the same reason, actually, that we strongly recommend putting the start, starting salary range in there, because if somebody thinks they're gonna make two hundred thousand, but, you know, and it's just, you know, salary negotiable upon qualifications, you go through the whole thing and you go, wait a minute, the person, you know, is looking, you know, a salary that you're not gonna pay. So, we're wasting their time, your time, everybody's time. So, the same with education experience, it's, it's difficult for the facilitator, myself, to say, well, I'm gonna make an exception for this person when there could be other exceptions, and if the exception isn't there, pretty much should stay with and, and would stay with what's required. So, what I hear is a bachelor degree in public administration or related field. Master degree preferred. And then, um, the five to seven years, uh, local government management experience. Let's, let's throw that one out there. A way I would interpret that is, it doesn't have to be as a city manager.
Right.
It could be, and again, this is kind of a judgment call, but if you're in a medium to large city and you're running a good-sized operation with a big budget and lots of people and you're involved in labor negotiations and settlement grievances and a lot of other things, that's one thing. If you're, you know, a department head and maybe you're the only person in the department, that's a whole nother, you know, smaller community. And so, that's something that I would have to look at and, and judge and bring to your attention, but. So, again, my definition on local government management experience would, doesn't have to be the top person in the organization unless that's what you want.
But you'd want somebody in like an administrative type role, right?
Right.
Yeah, I guess, I think minimally the five years, but if somebody didn't have a master's degree, I'd kind of be looking more on the experience. I'm assuming you would, too, as you're recruiting somebody, to look at that, but.
Right.
Is there any way to kind of specify kind of like a comparable-sized community, or is that something you kind of look at as you're interviewing?
And again, that's, we can pull whatever you folks come to.
Comparable complexity of community or?
Yeah, um, they, it tends to be, you know, that's subjective somewhat, and, uh, and I think from your vantage point and I guess from mine, too, um, one of the things that hap, why don't you just say this? One of the things when I, I started out in a small community, like a lot of people did, and, and so, making that leap, because the, the thinking is, well, you haven't managed a larger community. And so, but how do you manage a larger community unless you get a job managing a larger community if you're managing well in a smaller community? So, I think that, from my vantage point, the, if you choose to interview somebody in that capacity, you'd be judging during the interview process, how is this person, is the skills that they've acquired, maybe being more hands-on, wearing a few more hats than you would here, you'd have to make that judgment call. But you do it in the interview process. So, if, again, so getting to the question of, well, do we say comparable-sized community, you're a community of fifteen thousand, what's gonna be, you know, the, how far down do you go before it's not comparable? Ten thousand? And so, it's kind of a, that's where I say it's kind of a judgment call. I guess I would advise maybe not, you know, to just kind of let that one play out, you know, as you evaluate and see what experience, is that the only experience they have, or they've been in, you know, multiple settings? And, and, you know, where they, was the person experienced out, you know, in a county that was rural versus being in, you know, coming from a metropolitan area, you know, that's gonna make a difference. Because as you know, being landlocked, you know, it, that's a little different situation than you've got, you know, more property around you that could be developed and could possibly come into the city and that sort of thing. So, those are the kind of judgment calls you, you would make looking at a specific candidate. At, at least in my mind, doesn't, it's hard to play out in a comparable.
Okay.
What's comparable about, I apologize.
No, that's, I was just asking if that was something that you would consider maybe putting in there, or is that, it sounds like it's something you leave out.
You could, I guess, I, I just think it's hard to, it may take out somebody you would be interested in if they didn't feel that, well, I was in a, you know, more rural community, they're not gonna consider me because I was, you know, I, I haven't been in a metro area, but they could be a rising star.
It might be too limiting of your applicants if you put something like that.
Because I'll, I'll, if you track some of the folks, now, Ken is a little bit of an exception, because he came here and stayed here, came as apartment head, but a lot of folks start off in small, three thousand, four thousand, community, and I know your attorney has, you know, seen a lot of them, too, and, and so, I mean, there's different paths to actually getting to be a city manager.
Yeah, to, to that point, I wonder if, if we might wanna put preferred for our experience, our five to seven-year experience. For the Rabid CEO's search I was part of, the second CEO search I was part of, that, that's our transit system.
Okay.
Granville's part of the six-city consortium, anyway, so it's a regional transit system. We threw it open, we didn't, we did not require a management experience in, in a, in a transit system. We ended up hiring a woman from human resources. Now, she was a human resources person at a major transit system from New York City, so she knew transit, too, but her experience was in human resources, and she's doing a great job for us, for the Rabid. So, I think there are people like that out there, you know, that, that if you limit it too much, I mean, you know, they say, well, you know, Granville, they would never even look at me, you know. Your thought?
Yeah, um, I come at it from the vantage point of the, the bigger the possible pool of candidates that could apply, we, we, you know, we're gonna do the weeding down, but it does get to that.
You could have no say in a person's four years' experience, you know, that might just be, you know, perfect.
And, and again, you, the, the, five to seven years can be preferred, it can be required. It can be, you know, minimum preferred, minimum required.
I mean, are we getting hung up on words when we're paying you to like find these, these, you know?
Yeah, no, I guess, no, it.
You know what I mean? You know what you're doing, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so.
But you have to be, this, this is your, you know, this is your posting, I'm gonna facilitate it, but I don't, I don't, you know, we try to not put words in your mouth, but, you know, just to come to a consensus. So, um, and, and there is, I mean, in terms of, uh, it can be too broad. I mean, I've seen people, and, and if any of you dealt, deal in human resources and look at applications, you, you kind of scratch your head and go, why did this person apply? They don't have any of the, you know, experience, so, uh, we're seeing a little bit less than that in this job market, but. So, I would say, you know, probably ideally, the, you put the preferred at the end, you know, bachelor's degree, master's preferred, and then five to seven years, uh, preferred.
What's the other thing?
Yeah. I mean, we can put the preferred in there, and that way, if somebody has four and a half, you know, you're not technically, and, and I, you know, I don't, I think you folks would, would not be, well, we can't, you know, look at that person, but, uh, still, you sort of open it up and, and go, you know, somebody in the community, you know, was significant, go, wait a minute, you said they're supposed to have, you know, five years and this person has four and a half. So, I think if you leave it to a point where you make the judgment call as to whether their, their, their experience level is sufficient to do an excellent job here, and certainly, I'm, it's not gonna be a blind thing. I'm going to give you information about the person, what my take on it is, on their experience and what the references tell me. You're gonna see all that information, so it isn't like you're just looking at a piece of paper and then having to judge the person.
But I think by putting in five to seven years or whatever, preferred, applicants are gonna kind of say, yeah, that, that's kind of a, sort of a soft threshold, too. They're gonna self-select, I think.
Yeah.
I hope.
Okay, um, so let's talk about, we, we can, so we'll go five to seven here, and, and we'll come back to that in terms of, you know, if we wanna say anything after that. But skills and knowledge, what, from your vantage point, what? But skills and knowledge, what, from your vantage point, what kinds of skills do you think the person should have to be effective and do a great job for you?
Strategic thinking skills.
Okay.
Interpersonal communication skills.
Contract negotiation.
Contract negotiation, team player.
Big contract negotiations.
Somebody who's able to be kind of non-biased and transparent. You know, one of the things I really appreciate about Ken is that he always kind of gives us all the information that we need to make decisions. And I know that's part of the role of the city manager, but he kind of lays it all out there and gives us options and lets us know kind of what, you know, without really inserting any kind of bias or opinion most of the time.
Well, if he does, you don't.
And also sometimes we like try to tell, it's like, tell us what you really think, Ken, what do you want? And he's like, it's your decision tonight.
Okay, team player.
Yeah.
I'm going to put that over here personally.
You're just here to listen.
I'm here to help as needed or as I can, so, yeah.
Did you, were you the one earlier today too?
I think, you know, being an empowering manager, you know?
Empowering, okay.
Giving the tools to the department heads to let them lead their departments.
I think too, just even, even temperament, non-mercurial.
Okay.
Patient.
Patient, I mean, yeah.
Detail oriented, if you look through our council packets, if you come here unprepared, it's your own fault. Everything's really well laid out.
Yeah, it's kind of a skill to be both a strategic thinker and detail oriented, right? I mean, depending on what you're doing.
And so written and verbal communication too. We get some excellent memos.
Yeah, and it's not just communication to council, it's the department heads or other community leaders or regional leaders or state leaders or whatever that may be.
Residents.
Residents?
Yeah.
That's a really good one, actually, Justin. I'm sure the city manager's office gets calls all the time from residents and how you deal with residents that are upset, ready for someone.
Public relations skills.
Population skills.
That's where the even temperament comes in.
Right. Very service oriented, customer service oriented.
Okay.
You know, really is a servant leader type of, type of demeanor, you know, here to serve the people.
Mm-hmm.
Here to be a resource.
It's a real practical skill that, that comes in handy, especially in this office, because it's not overly staffed. I mean, Ken does, he does his emails, he does his memos, I mean, he, he writes and communicates himself rather than having people do it for him. It's a pretty lean operation, so somebody's got to know how to be tech savvy and do their stuff.
I'm going to put that under this one too, okay? Lean operation. In terms of support staff.
Yeah.
Well, he's very self-sufficient too. I mean, you don't even have an assistant in the office anymore. Still position.
Okay.
One other thing too, I guess, that I really appreciate is, you know, his, a lot of it's kind of a reflection on the experience with Ken, you know, as kind of our model for this idea, but just the way that he interacts with all of us too, like, I mean, he's very reliable about returning phone calls, returning emails, answering questions.
Okay.
You know, you don't have to ask him twice. He'll make notes about something in a meeting that somebody said and you'll get an email the next day and you kind of forgot that you even asked about it sometimes. And, you know, he'll make sure he follows up on it. I'm sure that's not just with us, I'm sure he does that with everybody that he interacts with, but just a lot of accountability and.
Yes.
I couldn't agree more.
Okay.
I realize why Ken's staying silent because this isn't, uh, he's, he doesn't need to chime in here, but I would appreciate, Ken, if you did have things to chime in on about who your successor would be, I think he gives some valuable insight as well.
I see any holes, I'll let you know, but, you know.
But I was kind of thinking, I'd love to hear what he has to say about, like the community profile. No, like the stuff about the community, like what is it about Granville and, you know, the city and the staff and the community that's kept you here for, for all these years? You know, like, I would love to know, like, what your perspective is on, on that, that you could share for the process too, for a future city manager.
You know, one thing I think is, just in the general heading of collaboration, and I think the city as a whole has an excellent record of being open to and successful with collaborations. Some of you have talked about the public and private school districts. We had Jason here from Walker tonight, we've got the IT collaboration, we share a court with Walker, we provide wastewater services to four different communities. And so, yeah, the Rapid, I always mentioned that to Jerry tonight, six cities there, Paul said it earlier, you know, and those are, I think, exciting for managers to be part of that stuff because you're, you're doing what you were taught, how to make government operate in its most efficient manner. And then I think it jumps down a level. And internally, the, the collaborations that I see between our departments is outstanding here. I, I know communities, I've heard from other managers who can't fathom the conversation that one department would have with another, they don't, they don't communicate. And that's not the tradition here. It's, it's not the style of our current department heads and it's never been the style. The Fourth of July has been mentioned a couple of times already tonight and that takes the Corks Office, it takes the Fire Department, it takes the DPW, the Police Department, and they all do it willingly and that's a joy for the next manager to, to sit back and kind of savor because it, it doesn't happen all the time.
Yep, good.
One thing under skills or knowledge about the manager, our manager gets together once a month informally with other managers and mayors, so, I mean, somebody who's willing to do that and
Okay.
just, and collaborate and just.
So, yeah, so that's a collaboration with other.
Other managers and mayors.
I know Tim mentioned critical thinking, but I think almost, or I'm sorry, strategic thinking, I was going to say critical thinking, you know, when presented with, when we're presented with a challenge, the city manager's office usually comes to us with more than one way to, within, while still staying within those ethical boundaries of, you know, how else can we look at the situation and how else can we solve this and not just say, well, this is the answer, go with this? You know, some things to consider. So I think the critical thinking part is, is huge.
I don't know if it's the same thing as strategic thinking, but it kind of goes along with that, but kind of being proactive and sort of anticipating like.
Sure. So the personalities.
Proactive versus reactive, maybe?
Right, yeah, like thinking one step ahead and making sure that the information's out there. I mean, quite often we get presented with stuff, it's like, well, just to give you an FYI, this is coming, you know, be thinking about this down the road here, we need to, you know, instead of it like we have to make a decision right now, it's.
Okay.
I don't know where this, I don't know where it fits in, but we've really devoted a lot of thought and energy and worked toward environmental sustainability in our community. We have an environment, environmental sustainability committee, we have a tree board, and so I think someone who has a passion for that or experience.
That could actually be on this one or it actually could be on the community. So let's just, because it's been initiated by government, so I'm going to put environmental.
Randy was saying we're a Tree City USA as well, so.
Environmental activism, is that a right word or?
Yeah, sustainability.
Nobody likes that word activism but me in this council, so.
Environmental sustainability.
He's not right.
Okay, good. Appreciate that. Okay, let's slide into the next one, then we'll just go back and do a quick review. So the last one here is about challenges that are coming that, from your vantage point, that the manager's going to be looking at and any opportunities out there, which in a lot of cases could be a challenge, it becomes an opportunity. So from your vantage point as a council member, what's, what's out of the horizon that maybe is being thought about but not, there hasn't been any necessarily action or even if it's been thought about and started action needs to be completed?
I managed to hear this this week from a resident, actually last week, that said, wow, the city's spending a lot of money on the library, the pavilion, the clean water plant, the this, the that, which is a challenge, obviously when you're bonding for many projects and looking for funds, but obviously it's an opportunity for the community to grow from it. So I think just our scalability of our community and the growth, even though you said we're landlocked, the scalability of our growth and, does it, do you have anyone going with that?
Is that, is that a challenge or an opportunity or goal?
It's both.
Okay.
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment.
Is that different than scalability though or not?
Write all the words down.
So it's scalable here.
It's kind of like maintaining a high quality of life for people that live here, you know, on various fronts, what.
And then redevelopment.
So kind of along with that.
So you're saying those are both challenges and opportunities?
Yeah, and they're already in the works to be opportunities as well, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But it's something that an advocate should know.
Sure.
I was going to add to that, so kind of along with redevelopment potentially, so we have a major regional mall here.
Okay.
That's been here for about twenty years and, you know, I think all of us are a little bit concerned about what the future of the mall looks like. We have some empty anchor stores, we have some empty non-anchor stores, you know, malls and generally brick and mortar retail developments are struggling in a lot of markets right now. So it's our major taxpayer. So I mean, that, that could be a threat to our, you know, ongoing tax base and.
Taxpayer.
And we all want to see the mall succeed, but, you know, realistically, the mall has to be maybe re-envisioned or something down the road that, you know, the city's been very actively involved in partnering with them. Wants to see that be successful.
I'm going to put that out, part of that redevelopment.
One of the unique things I, I think we've got in this community that's totally underdeveloped because there are challenges to it. We've got two and a half miles of Grand River, riverfrontage.
Okay.
City owns a lot of it, but it's hard to develop it, but boy, it's got potential.
So I'm going to put the Grand River portage.
Yeah. I mean, that's something unique about this city.
Sure. And there's a, you're saying there's a fair amount of public land?
Yeah.
So it's two and a half miles.
Yeah. Much of it's public, it's either city or county or but it's, it's challenging to do anything there.
Sure.
Buck Creek is an asset too.
Yeah, that's right.
We were told that's a pretty uncommon to have an urban fishery.
Urban trout.
Yeah, it's cold enough, barely.
It's called Buck Creek?
Yeah, Buck Creek, yeah.
So is that an opportunity or a challenge or?
Well, both.
Both?
It floods.
Are there boat watches on it?
Houston, Texas.
There is on the Grand.
On the Grand River, yes.
And it's too tight to get in.
Yeah, yeah, eventually.
It spills into the river, but it's not big enough to boat on.
And we've got a group that's very active and it's called Friends of Buck Creek that promote the river and cleanups and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
You know, I talked about this place, this city being an affordable place to live, but I do think, you know, a challenge is, is our, our, the housing market. And I think if we'd done this exercise two and a half years ago, we'd say different challenges that we're moving through.
Right.
But I think our, we have some projects in the work that are going to help solve this housing.
So is that affordable housing?
Affordable housing, yeah, and I think.
And that's a challenge?
It's a challenge, but we have opportunities with these new projects coming that are adding to the, to the housing numbers. What do we have, over five twenty new units coming?
Is that by the Green Howard behind Target?
Between the two, between Alderwood and.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I put new housing projects as an opportunity, affordable housing as the challenge. Okay. Anything else?
I mean, finances are always a challenge.
Okay.
Could put MERS on there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Pension liabilities.
Finance and pensions?
Yeah.
Is that MERS?
Legacy.
Yeah, employment, obligations.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah. Finances. Post-employment benefits.
But on the other hand, the city is in very strong financial shape. Like, I think, what you guys said, a lower mileage rate than lots of places.
Yeah, we have capacity.
You're lower than your elderly limit.
Oh, by far. By far.
Yeah. That's enviable. Okay, so let's real quick.
Maybe one more opportunity, Jerry, would be the execution of our ARPA funds.
Okay.
I know we've, we've already talked about what we're going to do with them, but I think the execution of that is a monster opportunity.
Execution of ARPA dollars. Anything else? We'll, let's do a quick summary here and then I'll run through what I have. And two, so I remember the community as a whole, IDs, what identifies the community in tradition, strong schools, partnered with public and private for parks and recreation and other activities, safe community, affordable cost of living, short ten to fifteen minute commute to Metro Grand Rapids downtown, centrally located for travel north, south and, and east, all directions. You have, you have a reputation and of trying to say yes to projects and ideas that come forth from people who want to develop in the community and by and large are welcoming the community and that you pass a nondiscrimination ordinance intentionally as an initiative that came out of discussion at the council. And then arts and festivals, active DDA, puts on a hundred and a half, as or more events, including the Fourth of July. You have projects associated, Granville Commons, five million dollar project, the farmer's market was a three million dollar project. You've got a long-range plan for your parks, you work well with other organizations in the community, the library, chamber of commerce, churches, all working together. Anything else you want to add here? Your city government, helpful staff, full-service community for the size that you are, have a low mileage rate, you're well-run and efficient, provide high value to residents, city council works well together, you basically put together an ethics statement, you have low drama in terms of the way you work out your decisions and discussion, you've had longevity in the city manager position and you have fantastic department heads, you have good relationships with local schools, you've started a mini grant program for neighborhood projects and emphasis, you have a lean organization in terms of your support staff, as was mentioned, the city manager does his own memos and other, other things, collaborate well with other units of government and also between departments here, and you have an emphasis on environmental sustainability. Anything else on city government?
Somebody mentioned the special project fund and our capital improvement fund. Those are voluntarily budgeted or allocated each year by the city council.
Special project and what's the other?
Capital improvement.
Oh, see, I.
So I think what that demonstrates in government is that the, the local elected officials are thinking ahead about needs of the city.
So I'm going to say set aside dollars.
Yeah, it creates a, a great resource to accomplish some things.
Well, and that's good to know too. I mean, there's no shortage in community, in a lot of communities, of talking about what you'd like to do, but then how are you going to pay for it? And you folks at least have, you know, put some money aside and can then prioritize over time what's the highest priority. But a lot of communities are just thinking about it, but really don't have the way to fund it unless they get a, you know, large grant. Okay, ideal candidates, first on education experience, bachelor's degree, public administration or a related field, a master's degree preferred, and then five to seven years of municipal management experience preferred. a master's degree preferred, and then five to seven years of municipal management experience preferred. And I would interpret that to the, it can be within a department of a government.
Yeah, right.
Because as we know, if you, for instance, the, the HR position was, was suggested, but typically in HR, if they're involved in hiring most of the employees, then they have an understanding of all the departments work, so. So I would take a pretty broad view on that. We still haven't come up with a starting salary range yet, I guess I start to hand that out. Then skills and knowledge, strategic thinking, interpersonal skills, contract negotiations, non-biased and not biased and transparent. A gives options, very good written and verbal communication skills, critical thinking skills, under personality and traits, team player, empowering, even temperament, detail-oriented, customer service orientation, is reliable, answers questions, does, could follow up, collaborates with other managers and elected officials in the area, similar to what your current manager is doing, and proactive. Anything else?
With somebody who's, you know, humble, that isn't a self-promoter, that's, you know.
I was just thinking that.
It's very quick to give credit to other people or doesn't really care who gets credit for success.
Success can.
Okay, so I, does humble do all? Or do you want me to put, not looking for where?
I mean, you get some of that personality, I guess, when you interview somebody too.
Whole personality.
And there's a lot of things that, you know, our manager does really well that he could brag about, but he doesn't, and he's quick to give credit to other people.
He's empowering, he gives other people product.
Yeah.
I think I'd like someone who is looking to maybe settle into that position, you know, sometimes people get into the position because it's then a stepping stone to the next stage.
So. So he settles in the community?
Yeah.
Yeah. Looking for down some roots.
That, that's kind of a, a side question, but does our charter require you to live?
You've, you've looked.
Yeah, it's state law.
Yeah, yeah, the state law actually looks past that, that did away with that rehire.
Right.
It's a Supreme Court.
So, even if it's in the charter, the state law overrides it. Now, you can, I know that close enough fire particularly can require like so many miles distance from the community, but.
You can incentivize a ownership, that's legal.
That, that was the, I appreciate you bringing it in, bringing it up, so, and, and by incentivizing, well, how can you do that? If the person is moving here anyway, because they're, they're not local and they can't commute, you can incentivize it by saying, well, you know, we'll pay, you know, a certain amount towards whether it's moving expenses. I mean, they might, might want to put that in agreement anyway, but, uh, another offset, you know, for the cost of housing, something in there that says we, hey, we want you to. Live in the community, and I would always suggest to folks that it's always a good thing to live in the community. And generally, we kind of get an idea, we can do that through the questions, and one of the things that I'll be doing for you is writing off some draft questions that you get a chance to look at, and they're confidential, but we'd ask, well, how are you, a question something like, how, how will you work yourself into the community? Or familiarize yourself with the community, and if they're going to move here and, and it's particularly helpful if somebody was, is on outskirts of being able to commute, then they'll, you can, you can kind of get that, are they gonna move here, or are they planning on commuting, or is they gonna commute for how long? And, and, and so we, we can generally fashion a question that'll give you an idea where they, they're going to live. Although you can't require it to be in the city.
Yeah, so you can't require it, but can you express a strong preference for somebody who would want to be living in the community?
Yeah, and that's something that I would do when I'm talking to them about that. I don't know that we'd actually want to put it in the advertisement, but.
Right.
I, I'll have a pretty good idea when, after I talk to the person on the phone before they're in the interview. And if I, if it's not real clear there, it would, it would be clearer after we ask questions as to what's the likelihood of that person living in the community. And, and I think even though I'm sure like all areas, your housing prices have gone up, you're still in the more affordable range of housing costs, and you have, you have a variety of housing. So there's a sure affordable housing in terms of the, from the salary range that you're probably gonna be offering. Isn't, I mean, there are some communities where managers can't afford to live where they're managing because they're not paying a salary that's, that would afford them to live there. So that's not the case here from everything I can gather, so. That's, again, another plus, another reason why it's, I would say, more than likely, if your manager's coming from the outside, you know, from a far enough distance that they're gonna relocate, that they were gonna relocate to the city, assuming you've got some housing that's available to purchase. And I know the market's been, I haven't looked at how tight the housing market is here. It's tight all over, but some places, it's really.
Maybe temporarily.
I mean, people.
Housing market is pretty tight.
And I've heard some stories about the Grand Rapids area, not necessarily here, but, you know, just prices going, you know, like skyrocketing, so. So that's, it was a good question about, about residency. It, there wasn't any where you could require the manager to live in the community, but not based on current state law. Okay, um, let's go real quick over the last unit and then go back to the salaries information I've got for it. So under challenges, we've got, I, I put down scalability here, but I think the, the discussion or the point that was made has to do with financing and, there's a lot that's happened here and probably will continue to happen for the size of the city, and that's a challenge. I know there's been some conversation about this building, for instance, you've replaced other buildings and, you know, the thing, so. So there's, you know, that's always, if you've got limited financial ability to fund long-range projects or expensive big projects, then scalability is a, is a, gonna be a challenge. Uh, redevelopment, particularly a regional mall, it's a major taxpayer. You've got both Grand River, Frontage, and Buck Creek, and they're both challenges and opportunities. Affordable housing is a challenge, but then you've got some housing projects on the horizon that will be opportunities. And from a financial standpoint, you have your post-employment benefits and, and actually just the cost of benefits, health insurance, those sort of things. And, and then from in terms of opportunities, your ARPA funds are still there to be, some of them identify where you're gonna spend it, but you haven't spent it yet, so. That's that. I'm going to give you, the league does a survey, actually, there's two parts to this salary survey. One is across, I think it's pretty much lower Michigan, and then another kind of targets, there's two sizes of this.
Thank you.
I think you'll see that the, grand goes down to the bottom, but you're very competitive in terms of the information.
Best model, see what we got, yeah.
You got one, two, three, I got two more. So the information I was given was that your range is one oh six and some change to one hundred thirty-seven thousand eight thirty-one. And, um, you can see, and I'm looking at the smaller backside customized comps, which some are in, in the general area here, and others are metro, some servers Detroit and other places, similar size, you can see from the population. But you fall pretty close, actually, a little bit high on, on this one, on the, on the front one, you're right about average. And there are some that kind of throw it off, there's some that are low, and then there's some that are high. So from my vantage point, I think you, you know, you have a competitive salary range for the position. So the question, I guess you first look at that. And like a lot of highly skilled positions, there's been some inflation in terms of the cost of salaries going up. And, you know, I guess we'll, that's, you know, your call in terms of where you want to set this. There are some ways to deal with salary when it comes to actually negotiating that can be utilized. And I'll just mention it now, but most of the time, your, your contracts run more than a year, so they could be like a three-year contract, although they're, the manager is an at-will employee. So the, the manager's contract could end, you know, at any point in time. But it does, in terms of salary or, and or benefits, it, you know, it generally lists multiple years. Uh, one thing that I've seen some communities do is, is kind of list out a salary for year two and year three in the initial contract, and with the assumption, of course, that the manager is meeting certain criteria or whatever the case might be. But that takes some pressure off of looking at trying to negotiate the highest salary increase. So.
Does, does part of your services include helping us formulate a contract initially?
Yeah, good question, the, the, and it's right in our proposal that, oh, what I would end up doing at your request as part of the contract to basically negotiate for, and, and media, let's say mediate, whatever the right term, is between the parties to come to an agreement. So I wouldn't be advocating for the individual, I would not be advocating for the city, but working, I can, and I've done it different ways where I'm talking to the candidate, and then, and then the candidate talks to me, then I talk to the city, and kind of back and forth. And, and it's really your call. One of the things we suggest is there be a point person or subcommittee of folks representing the city that I, that work with the candidate as opposed to trying to work with all seven of you, and with the understanding that whatever's negotiated comes back to the full city council to be approved, and it's not official until it's approved. So you've got a party of one on one side of the negotiation, which can obviously negotiate whatever they're going to agree to, but then you've got to see council, and then you'll have to decide, and you'll have to decide now, but the parameters of which, if you want to give the subcommittee or the person, it can be the mayor, it can be the mayor and the attorney or some other group of you folks, what criteria you want to give that group to negotiate on behalf of the city. And, and again, with the idea that, we can provide, the International City Management Association has a model contract that has the verbiage in it, and you have, I'm sure Ken has a contract, you can look at that as a starting point, but we, we're available to answer your question, to assist as part of our, our service. Be happy to do that. So for the purposes of the advertisement, then I, I'm going to need to know, what do we want to list as the starting salary range for a position?
So can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So it sounds like you were kind of thinking that our range that we have currently is reasonable and kind of in the market.
Yeah.
Since we've changed the job description to have the degree and the experience to be preferable versus required from the current job description, would you recommend adjusting that one way or the other at all, or? Like, does that still seem like a reasonable range that we have currently based on?
Yeah, I, I, and again, I think the thing would be, are you willing, for instance, it's not uncommon for cities that replace their manager to pay the new person coming in the same amount that they paid the person leaving.
That is uncommon?
It is common.
Oh, it is common?
Oh, yeah, it, it has happened, I can tell you that's what happened when I left, my position. And so a lot of it depends on the person and, and, you know, whatever the case might be. So the, the tricky part is, if, if you make the range smaller than the salary, then basically what we're telling folks is, and I would be asking them, are you willing to come to Grandville for this salary range? Because there, there are some people think that, well, if they want me, well, then I can negotiate a little bit higher salary. No, that's not the way the league prefers to work. I need to know before I'm going to recommend that you be considered for a candidate, the candidate, are you willing to come to Cranville for this salary? Or within the salary range, and maybe, you know, like most people, they would like to see themselves at the top of the range. That doesn't mean we're gonna get the top of the range, but that's the, why I think it's important. Because we can list the salary range of the position without talking about starting salary. But I guess I need to know, and we can do that, without saying that's a starting salary range. But I need to know, though, that if, for instance, the one hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight thirty-one, if you're not willing to pay that, then I need to know what you are willing to pay so that I can make sure that the person that I'm recommending be considered for an interview is willing to come here for that.
So that's, that's the hard thing, it's like, you know, you don't want to sell yourself too short with candidates, but on the other hand, it's like, where, where, where we're at right now with this position is, you know, thirty years in the making.
Right.
With somebody that's worked toward that, that has a level of experience and longevity.
Okay, so that, again, so now I'm going to repeat what I said, but which may make it a little more contextual. And that is, if you talk about years two and three, then if I know, as I put myself in, in this position, there's one thing you go, well, you know, whatever I come in at, if the cost, you know, and again, it helps probably that you have steps. I understand you have steps, right? So they can see what the progression is and where they might fall if they're not at the top, and where they're gonna be in year one, after year one or two, assuming, you know, making some assumptions that the salaries would increase on an annual basis at some point. They can see where they're at. Otherwise, without, and it's good that you have, you know, a, a salary schedule, because in, in a lot of cases, in most cases, there is no salary schedule for the manager, unlike, you know, a police officer starts and, you know, five steps and whatever. So a manager finds themselves in, well, the, I need to negotiate the highest amount, because if I get a cost of living based on that, and that's all I'm gonna get, then, then that's one thing, which may be two percent or three percent. Or if you look at a multi-year contract, and so you start out at one amount and you get, negotiate a, a second year salary and a third year salary that's more than the cost of living, then they can see where they're headed. And, you know, for a lot of different things, whether it's mortgage payments or whatever the case might be. So that's kind of the, the rationale for, you know, why a manager typically would try to get to the highest amount, because if you don't have a schedule, then you're basically gonna, most managers are gonna feel awkward taking a higher percentage increase than everybody else is getting. Unless there's some separate document that says, like the employment agreement, that says, hey, we've agreed to these steps. So bottom line is, we can list the, the. So, bottom line is, we can list the salary range for the position in the ad, but what I would like to know sooner than later is, you know, at what, how high are you willing to go with the starting salary?
Do you feel like, you know, year two and three, year one's obviously going to be important, but two and three should somehow be tied to some kind of performance appraisal?
Yeah, and again, that's part of, you can do that as part of the employment agreement. That's, you can roll that in there.
I think that's going to be really important, you know, with somebody that's new, that you're going to want input from us and others as well.
Yeah, and I, you know, I guess, from, you know, I appreciate that, here's somebody that's been here 30 years, and yet, you know, somebody who comes in the door, hasn't done anything for the city, and, you know, it's, you're looking at paying that person as much or close to that much. I understand the, kind of the dilemma there, but then you've got the market forces with, you know, housing costs and everything, moving costs and everything else, and that all has to be weighed in the mix in terms of, you know, attracting a person here. And I guess the other argument I guess I would make is a good, obviously, and you've seen it, a good manager making good decisions and working collaboratively is, you know, is going to be a huge asset going forward, you know, for the community. So, on one hand, you could argue, you know, in terms of, you know, how much you pay a person, you know, if they're doing a great job and the city continues to move forward, they're worth everything you're paying them, ever. So, you know, it's, it's really your call.
And you need to know tonight?
Well, again, if, I mean, I'm like, most communities I deal with, they don't have a salary range already set up for the position, so based on that, I can put that in the ad. But at some point, I would like to know, because I don't, if somebody says, well, I guess I could, in, in just thinking through this, and when I, when I talk to the individuals, I could find out, you know, what's their bottom line in terms of the salary that would, they would need in order to make the move, and kind of go from there.
I can tell you, you know, we're in the process of recruiting, I guess I'll call it, seeking out a finance director, and, you know, that's an important position. We've gone through, I think, three different iterations of a compensation plan with the league. This range is the current range. We did that just a couple of years ago, and it's been inflated the last couple of years. The data seems to show that the range is pretty accurate.
Right.
So, the question being asked is about starting point, and what we're seeing regarding the market influences that Jerry's talking about is that it is harder to get people in, and that's just not, that's not just department heads, but anywhere, if they're going to make a move from one employer to another, it's hard to get them at the starting range. We used to get fairly successful at starting people at the start. More recently, we've started people above the start, and usually, that's been, until recently, limited to the first step or two, and in our MML plan, we've got steps through the first, the first half to the midpoint. I think we've, the most we've ventured so far is the third step, and that was hiring somebody who clearly had experience, was qualified for the job, that we had no concerns about any risk of failure, and the path for the next several years was clear, because we have a plan. And that was, it was going to be these steps that are there inflated by the annual amount, or above the midpoint, like Josh mentioned, it's, your increase is based on your performance review. So, so we are seeing people starting above the start. We haven't got to the point so far where we've seen people start at the top. Finance director? Good question. You know, we'll see what we get there, but it, we know it's going to be a limited pool of qualified candidates, and it's going to be hard to do that. But we have made a habit of posting for other positions, the actual grades that have been adopted by city council, and then seeing what happens from there. And when we find the right person, where are they, what are they making now, what is it going to take to get him here, what's reasonable, we try to have an eye towards equity. You don't want to have somebody starting in a similar position to somebody that started a year before, or two years or three years before, making more money. There's a lot of factors there, but I tend to think that the way we've done it has worked so far fairly well, and if you're publishing the grade, the pay range, and you can explain the process for how you go about getting increases, then Jerry can go to work to some extent on what are we really trying to work towards for a starting amount there, and the council can figure out based on that person's experience and capabilities and how badly you desire that person, where the appropriate start point is, whether that's bottom, midpoint, top, you know, whatever. So, that's just how it's been working to this point, and yes, the starting points are edging up in order to get people to take these positions.
So, do we post what we have and then put negotiable?
Well, we would say, you know, salary depending on, you know, is negotiable depending on?
Experience.
Experience.
Qualifications.
Qualifications, depending on qualifications. And I'll get the breakdown of the steps, so I'll be clear on how many steps there are and that sort of thing. I think that would work, if that's okay. If the council is, is okay with, you know, and for some of you, this is the first time you saw the, the actual, let me just say one other thing here on that, is that there's two, two ways I've heard people look at this, when you, when you show a range of $30,000. And that is, well, some people are going to say, well, I want you at the top, others would look at it and say, well, they're going to try to get me for the bottom. And, and so, I guess that's just the...
The reality of our, of our pay ranges is that the midpoint is, is really the point determined to be the market rate, and then it's a 30% bandwidth, so you get 15% below and 15% above, and somebody coming in at the start that doesn't have experience probably shouldn't be paid at the market rate, but somebody who has experience can be paid above that amount, so.
Okay, yeah. So, I think I need to get a little more familiar with, and as long as the, you folks are comfortable with kind of the practice, I'll, I'll get...
We can talk more.
Yeah, we'll talk some more about how that works, okay?
Yep.
Okay, any other questions about this process? So, the next step is for me to put together my notes, number one, which won't take a long time, but then we'll, I'll draft a, an ad, which we call brochure, that's going to be multi-page with, you know, colored photos that staff is providing us, and the league staff will put this together, and we advertise. So, what you're going to get from me is the text of the brochure ad, based on the information here, and I'll give you a few days to look at it, and then send me your comments if you have any, and then we will start to advertise. So, any questions, and then the, so, in addition to the draft, I'll send a memo, so when you get something from me, it's going to be with an explanation, okay? But I think we're, good start. Appreciate the information, appreciate again Ken showing me around the community to get a firsthand view of very nice community. Thank you, a lot of good for you. It is a tight market. We'll just do our best to not only advertise, but recruit good candidates for you, and we'll see what happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else to the council? What's, do you have some other comments?
Nothing that comes, nothing that comes to mind, thank you.
Just the only thing to mention would be the election coming up next week, Tuesday, before next meeting, so make sure people get out and vote, it's always important.
Just kudos to Carol Glanville and/or Mark Heisenberg for, however, we got that 800K for the Ariel truck, but it's awesome, and I'll bet you're pretty excited, chief.
Oh, it's that much less we have that, you know.
We'll get it, we'll get it. And thanks, Ken, did this goose poop?
It popped up today, so.
So, I'll read it, and we do probably have to follow up with that resident, don't we?
Yeah, Charlie and I have talked a little bit, you know, the 4th of July is over now. I think he thought that if things were really bad, it had rained for a while, you know, maybe that's changed a little bit in the last couple of days, but that they might have to do some additional cleanup out there, but the article will not give you any solutions.
Shoot.
Sorry.
Can't do that.
That's it?
I'm also, thanks. Just Steve, our only condolences to you and your family, I don't know if she asked you, I don't know if she, her obituary was a lengthy read, but that means, meant that she had a lot of impact on a lot of people, so she was a special.
Thank you.
And I did see a marked goose poop vehicle leaving the middle school today, so I don't know if they were accompanied doing something in the region, but it was a white car, no intended, I guess, in goose poop, but it was, you know, I didn't catch the logo itself, but it's Goose Poop Patrol or something.
Hold on, hold on.
It's on the radar of the community.
That's it.
Now, I don't have anything other than, thank you, everybody, for expressing your condolences. I very appreciate that, appreciated, so.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, or?
Motion to support. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes, and the opposite can say no.